All right. Good afternoon. It is the 17th of January for council time. And we're going to begin with public comment. We have a fairly short agenda, but perhaps a later afternoon depending on how our executive sessions go. Anyway, I want to remind the public to please keep your comments polite and on county business. We don't need divisive comments. And I have asked staff, and I'm going to ask council members as well, you know, be quick to call a point of order or to ask for untoward comments to stop. This isn't a personal blog out in public. We have county businesses to take, and we don't need divisive comments. So with that, on agenda items only, do we have anyone signed up or online for public comment?
Yes, we do. Caller, please go ahead.
This is Kimberly Gohean Alvin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, and I resent the newly elected chair of mentioning anything that would be pertaining to open public comment. Like it or not, and I don't like some of the comments made either.
So, Ma'am, this isn't just open public comment for your own personal time. Please keep your comments to agenda items only. Thank you.
So this is me again, Kimberly Gohean Alvin. So you were going to be passing January 10. Okay, the phone is asking me to unmute myself, so am I unmuted now? Can you hear me?
You've been unmuted the entire time.
No, actually with my phone, so I'll ask this council to give me back 30 seconds. Thank you. So on your minutes of January 10 that you'll be passing, it is not on the CV TV site. I find that disturbing, and I want to know why it's not there. At this particular meeting, many citizens voiced their concerns about Shilachi Prairie. The $100,000 that you're going to be giving of hard-earned tax dollars to another position, maybe he'll do a lot better than the one that is there already. I forget his name, but he might be related to an ex-council member. I'll remind Clark County citizens that these people are unelected officials pushing their GMA agenda. It's unconstitutional. In those minutes, it states that we are overpopulated, and they will continue on this path to mine the 890 acres of trees and then rock out of the Shilachi Prairie. And they're going to put that rock on the 33 miles of railroad for the interstate bridge that sanctuary city Vancouver will have light rail on. All of this should prove to the Clark County citizens that they will run these things not the way that the citizens want their hard-earned tax dollars to go, but that they're pushing their agenda under the United Nations and a GMA, which is also under that unconstitutional. So the agenda pushers mentioned, we have community input. Well, really, what proof do they have that they went out and simply just don't say that they have community input? I find that absolutely disturbing and a lie. We need proof that they go out and ask the public, because the public does not want more growth in Clark County. You've taken away our country settings. We do not want rock hauls on a railroad nearby our schools. I'm asking citizens to stand and assemble.
And I was reminded that I believe there is an agenda amendment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Medvee. I'd like to request two amendments to the agenda today. Item 7.1, just to note that there may be possible after-action on that executive session. And then the second one is to add an additional executive session for 10 minutes pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101AII. And we will reflect that in the minutes as well. Thank you.
Okay, any objection to that amendment? I did not get the full RCW 42.30. What was the remainder?
Yes, so it's 42.30.110, parentheses 1, parentheses A, and parentheses little i.
And that would be for item 7.4 that we're now adding.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any objection? All right, it's so amended. Any other?
Pardon me, Chair Medvee. I did actually, in looking at what's listed under the executive sessions, I have one other amendment to make, and that's for 7.2 and 7.3. The RCW that's referenced is incorrect. It should be RCW 42.30.110.1, small letter i. So basically removing the A there. That's for the pending litigation and the potential litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Removing A on both of them? Correct. Thank you.
And I'll have you correct me once we get to that point when I say it incorrectly.
Certainly, thanks.
All right, do we have other public comments, Kristin?
No, that is all.
Okay, well, then let's move on to old business, which is the minutes. Everyone had a chance to review them?
I'm of approval.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So moving to three, new business. I understand there isn't any listed.
That is correct.
So we'll move to item four, counselor reports. And since we're here, I do note that I think Glenn was not able to sign on again, and he was excused, Counselor Young. We didn't mention that at the beginning of the meeting. So is that correct? I don't see him logged on.
That is correct. He is not on.
Thank you. So hearing that there aren't any counselor reports, are there any work session requests?
None today.
And moving on to policy updates, Jordan.
All right, hey, Council, Jordan Bogie. For the record, I do have a few items for you today. I wanted to just touch base on a few of the upcoming bills that are working their way through the legislature, that our lobbyists have forwarded to council for your review and consideration. But I just wanted to bring them up in front of the whole council this week so folks could, you know, have any feedback. And if you would like to give a thumbs up to support or oppose a few of these bills, we can do that as well. So I've got, the first one today is SB 5836, which is related to adding the 12th judge here in the county. And really, I just wanted to give an update on that bill, which is that it was moved out of the Law and Justice Committee on the 11th unanimously, and the bill is now heading to the Senate Ways and Means Committee. So just want to let you know that that is moving right along. The next bill that I wanted to bring up is House Bill 2211, 2211. And it is related to the public safety sales tax. And essentially, what the bill says is, so until January 1 of 2027, a county legislative authority, you know, can council-matically impose a sales tax of up to 3/10 of a percent. What this bill would do is if a county does not impose all or part of the 3/10 of a percent sales tax by July 1 of this year, city legislative authorities may impose the tax. So what that means is because Clark County has taken 1/10 of a percent for our public safety sales tax, this bill would allow other municipalities within the county to take the remaining 2/10 of a percent if they wish, if the council does not take any further action by July 1. And so just wanted to put that on your radar, that this is moving through the legislature. And if there is a desire for council to increase the public safety sales tax, would need to do so by July 1, after which cities would be free to take that other 2/10 of a percent if they wished.
I have a question. Was that this year, July 1 this year?
That is correct, so it's coming up fairly quickly, the way the bill is currently written.
Bill hasn't passed yet. Okay.
Yes, so it has not passed yet, but it is something that would impact the county potentially if there was a desire to do anything else with the public safety sales tax at the county level.
And it doesn't change the split, 60-40 split, as currently written?
No, it doesn't change the current allocation. It just essentially is after July 1 would allow cities to take the remainder of the 3/10 of a percent that's allowed.
Thank you. You had a further update?
I do, yeah. And so there is another bill that is coming up before the legislature, and it is Senate Bill 5983. And it is related to syphilis treatment. And this is a WASLFO priority. So this is the Washington State Association of Local Public Health Officials. This is one of their priorities. And essentially, what this bill would do is right now, so the treatment for syphilis is an injection of penicillin. And right now, medical assistants are allowed to provide this injection to treat syphilis under the supervision of a doctor. What this bill would do is change it so that the doctor does not need to be in person, but could supervise this injection via telehealth. And WASLFO, the organization, has asked Dr. Melnick to testify in support of this bill tomorrow. But I wanted to get three thumbs up from the council to make sure that that's a policy direction you are okay with the county supporting before saying that he would testify. So that is when I would like to get three thumbs up in support of doing that if council chooses.
Thumbs up from me.
Great, thank you all. Appreciate that. And, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Melnick, and he mentioned that syphilis rates are increasing statewide. And this is particularly important for rural counties and rural parts of counties, where, you know, getting a doctor out in the field can be a little bit challenging. There's another WASLFO priority that I wanted to alert you to as well. And that is, it's a bill that has not dropped yet, but it is a, there are statutes related to child fatality review and prevention. So when a child dies, there's a process that the state goes through in identifying and how they look at cause of death. And there are some technical adjustments to that bill that WASLFO is interested in addressing. And so we can talk more about that when the bill actually drops. It also would raise the age to 18. Right now, it is anyone below the age of 18 is considered under the statute. And so it's kind of a technical adjustment, but I just wanted to bring that up as something that will be coming up. There are a couple more bills I'd like to mention for your consideration as well. One is House Bill 2113, and it's related to the GMA's housing element. And it would essentially require the county to submit our housing element of our comprehensive plan to the State Department of Commerce for approval and compliance before it could be implemented. And WASAC is opposing this bill, partly because the amount of time given to Commerce is 180 days. So it could be a fairly significant length of time that they are reviewing this. It also kind of changes the Growth Management Act's, you know, rules around the comprehensive planning process from a bottom-up to kind of a top-down process, where Commerce is really telling, is approving the compliance of counties. I have also asked Oliver and the county planning staff to review this bill if they have any other objections as well. But just wanted to let you know that that is something that is coming down the pipe that could potentially impact the county pretty significantly if it was passed.
Could we pause on that a second?
Yeah.
Because Counselor Young, I think he sits in on the WASAC meetings, and I hadn't heard of this. This is one I think we should track, because just based on what you've just said, and I hadn't heard of it before, I would certainly advocate that we should speak up against it. It does sound like too dramatic a change and a negative one for local county planning.
That's my impression of the bill as well. And that's WASAC's determination also, that as written, it's really kind of this administrative burden, and then also, you know, has these requirements of our planning department, and then kind of this long timeline and approvals process from the State Department of Commerce backed down before the county could even begin to implement the housing portion of our comprehensive plan, given the review from the Department of Commerce.
I would agree that we need to watch it. A thought that comes up in my mind, a few sessions ago, there was a bill that would have provided safe harbor to jurisdictions so that as an option, a jurisdiction could submit their comp plan update. And then they would like these, and if it was okay, got the okay from the Commerce Department, you could be immune from challenges, as I recall. But this mandatory, we don't get anything out of it, really.
No, and my understanding is that the way that the bill is currently constructed, it also doesn't provide any, you know, liability or risk protection for the county, right? If Commerce is now the body that is saying that we are in compliance with the housing element, there's nothing in the bill that now says, hey, Commerce is responsible if someone else at a later date finds issue with the housing portion of our plan, even if it's been approved already by the Commerce Department. So that's another reason that it's not supported by the association of counties.
Yeah, it's like taking the county's voice and local issues away from them. So, yeah, I don't support that either.
So we'll keep tracking that. And I would not be surprised if this is something that comes up again in next Monday's conversation with Josh and Anika as well. And so there's just one more that I'd like to share with you that Josh and Anika do recommend that the county support, and this is Senate Bill 6029, and it's related to accessory dwelling units. And it authorizes counties planning under the GMA to allow detached accessory ADUs outside of urban growth areas if the ADU is subject to development regulations that includes certain limitations. So for instance, you could have an ADU in a rural area, but the land that you use for the ADU could not be agricultural or forest land. So that is one of the limitations related to SB 6029. There are a handful of other limitations that I can get into if you'd like. You know, the applicant for the ADU needs to have documentation that there is existing or a proposed sewage or septic system capable of handling the ADU. The floor area of the detached ADU cannot exceed the floor area of what would otherwise be authorized by the county as an expansion of the primary dwelling. So it couldn't be larger than what would be allowed if you put an expansion on your house, and can't be greater than 1,296 square feet. So it's rather specific. It's got to be located within the same acre as the primary dwelling unit and utilize the same driveway. And I believe those are the, oh, and the parcel cannot be subdivided for the purposes of avoiding limits on development regulations.
So that's not out of committee yet. I mean, there may be a lot of changes coming up, but I certainly would support the general idea of it. Is it premature until we see what amendments may be attached?
You know, I think it's, if we support the bill as currently constructed, the lobbyists could sign in support for the committee hearings for this. But it also, I think, you know, if we wanted to wait and see how it's amended, and then if it's moving to the floor, and we wanted to lock our support, then that would be an option as well.
I have concerns about this one personally. I'm glad that it's not on resource lands. But in Clark County, I think, and maybe uniquely to Clark County, the rural landscape has already been parcellized to a huge extent. And I was just thinking of this bill in terms of, just in front of my house, how many ADUs that that would allow. So I have concerns about how this would, because all of those additional houses would impact local farming, because there's all those additional people to complain about what we're doing. And just to clarify, normal agricultural practices. So I'd like to pause on this one and see if it comes out of committee, if it gets further narrowed.
Other comments? Karen, Michelle?
I also would like to wait until we see what's going to happen to it down the line.
Same.
Okay, so we'll keep track of it and see how it changes and learn a little bit more about it. We'll pause on it for right now.
Great. So those are the legislative items I had for you today. If there are, that's not the full list of everything that Josh and Anika are tracking and that we're watching. But if there are any other specific items from that, you know, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to get more information or connect Josh and Anika with us to provide an update or whatever is needed in that realm. So the next item I had was related to Representative McClintock's office sent out to the county, I think I mentioned this last week, and asked for transportation requests. And so this is not a, you know, Representative McClintock is not on the Transportation Committee. This is just a tool by which we can put in requests for different transportation funding requests to the committee. They'll be considered, and whether or not they bring it forward is up to the discretion of the committee chairs. But I have received five requests so far from council members. And so I'd like to get an up or down thumbs up on whether I should put together those transportation requests to forward to her office to share with the Transportation Committee. And so I can share those with you all now.
Yeah, please summarize it.
Yeah, and so the first request is funding to support planning for a third corridor. And so there was an RFP RFQ for what that process might look like, so I can put that request in. I'm seeing a couple of thumbs, I have three. Okay, great. So I've got three for that, so I'll put in that request. I have a request, to request funding for the widening of the Camas Slough Bridge, which is in need of repair. There was actually funding that was originally appropriated for the Slough Bridge in 2017, but all of that funding was redirected to the project that is working on the interchange between 164th and the 205 junction on SR14 there. And they're adding that other lane and putting in the sound barrier. So all the money that originally was for the slough is now going to that. But I had a request from the chair, so are there three thumbs up? Let's see, and three, okay. There was another request to ask for additional funding for the railroad for repairs and improvements related to, so there was funding in an omnibus transportation bill several years ago for rail improvements that was not approved, and the issue has not come back. But the chair asked that I make a request for additional funding for repairs and improvements for the railroad. Okay, I'm seeing three there. I also, I got a request from Counselor Marshall to add another request for the Ridgefield I-5 Connector Project that we already sent a letter in support of, but I just wanted to make sure that you all were in support of me adding to this as well. All right, seeing three there. And then the final request was for funding to support neighborhood transportation programs. So this would be funding for things like sidewalks and safety improvements generally within the county. And so, you know, it wasn't framed as a specific project, but the request would probably be for more of a grant-style process to provide funding for neighborhood transportation improvements.
I would just add to that for a specific thing is safer apps to schools.
Great, so I think I saw three thumbs on that. And those were my two policy areas, the bills and the transportation requests. So thank you all for sitting through all those bills.
Thank you, Jordan. We'll go on to executive sessions. I'll see if I cover this correctly. So 7.1 is RCW 42.30.110, paren 1, paren G, for 10 minutes. And it may have possible action when we come out of executive session. 7.2 is pending litigation under RCW 42.30.110, paren 1. I'm sorry, does it end after paren 1?
No, you're right. It's paren 1 and then paren small i.
And small i, thank you. And that's for 15 minutes approximately. And then 7.3 is the same potential litigation under the same RCW for approximately five minutes. And then we've added 7.4, and that's under RCW 42.30.110, paren 1, paren A, paren double i. And what was the approximate estimated time for that?
10 minutes. So it's a total of 40.
Well, hopefully 7.1 takes that 10 minutes. I'm going to say I'm going to put it out to we'll come back at at fourteen hun, no, at fourteen thirty. Because I think we'll need a break in between. And I think some of these may take a few minutes longer. Is that okay, Leslie, that I estimate it to be a little bit longer?
Chair, thank you for the question. What I suggest is we go ahead and do the 40 minutes. If you want, you can. So we'll come back at two fifteen. And then if we need to extend, we can do that.
All right. I just hate all the interruptions by extending it. All right. Two fifteen will be the return date. Let's return time. Let's go ahead and log off of this and get into the executive session and we'll see you there momentarily. Okay, super. We're returned back to our council session. And we've returned from executive session. We do have some action following one of the discussions together with our lawyer and the counselors. So what I would like to do is something a little different than we've done in the past. Because we do have lengthy process to go through. We have three vacancies on our planning commission. One position is to fulfill a term just shy of two years. And then the other two positions are for six year terms. We had a great outpouring with a with a diversity of resumes. Twenty six in all applied for this planning for these vacancies. So the the part I'd like to do different is I'd like to start with District Two and see if there are any motions.
I'd like to motion to interview five candidates.
Okay, is is there a second?
Second that.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that motion carries. Let's once again go back to District Two, now that we're looking at five nominees to interview that. And that would be separately noticed. We'll have a separate public hearing on it when we're able to schedule those those interviews. Back to District Two, do you have a nomination you would like to make?
If I can get off mute. I would like to nominate, I'm just trying to make sure that I am pronouncing his name correct. Hopefully, I'm saying this right. Is it Brian Halbert? Correct? Is that, am I saying his name correct? He's currently on? I'd like to nominate Brian Halbert. He's currently on the Planning Commission. And I think just for equity purposes, we need to include him in the interviews to make it fair for all applicants. Peter Silliman.
Oh, so I think the the idea was to just go one at a time. I think that may be the best best process. Okay, so there's a motion to nominate for an interview Brian Halbert. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, now we'll have further discussion. Anything further you wanted to add? Michelle or any other counselor? Certainly a well rounded out resume, and he's proven proven member of this commission. So hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I will go to District Three.
And Chair, I wish to nominate for one of those five open positions that we are interviewing for, Peter Silliman.
And if you know offhand, what applicant number was he? Just so I can get through my packet.
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
It's applicant sixteen.
Thank you. Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded. Further discussion. I'm sorry, which number applicant number did you say it was?
Sixteen.
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 Okay, so if there is no further discussion, we can go right to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Just getting my paperwork in order here. Sorry for the delay. We'll go to District Four. I would make a motion to nominate for an interview Mark Burghold. Is there a second? Here's applicant number fourteen.
I would second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, going to District Five.
I would move Ron Barca for an interview. Ron has a lot of experience with land use, has served on the Planning Commission prior and been through the comp plan update process before, and also very much involved with affordable housing.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, hearing none. We'll go back to District Two.
I'd like to nominate Daniel Weaver.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And once again, could you help me out if you know which applicant number is it?
Let me look really quickly so I can find it. There were so many.
I know.
He was it's taking me a while to scroll through. Four, applicant four.
Okay, thank you.
I was going the wrong way.
Further discussion. Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Going back to District Four. I'm sorry, District Three.
That's okay. I think I'm going to pass this time around.
Okay. Back to District Four. I would nominate for an interview, and it is candidate number seven Jeremy Baker. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. And I do believe that's if we do stick to their motion that carried earlier, that we have five candidates now for the three vacancies. So that I believe that concludes the nomination process. We just need to have a time when we can all be there and the candidates can be there for their interview. Hopefully, we won't be having a nice storm at the time.
May we confirm whether the interviews will be virtual?
Well, what does everyone want to do?
Well, my own thought is that I'd rather get this done than wait a while. And I'm not seeing that it's going to be anything but slick here for a while. So my thought would be, let's keep it virtual.
There's another storm that's supposed to be coming in, actually.
Really?
Yes, I'm watching the weather.
Okay, so any objection to that, Sue? Having
No, I can go either way.
Okay, all right. So Kathleen, if we can organize that and see when the candidates are available and to fit within our schedule as well. So I I think that concludes our business today, at least on the agenda that we had. Was there any additional comment before we adjourn? Okay, hearing none. Stay off the road, stay inside. And we'll see you at the next meeting.
See ya.